Good morning. We'll call the regularly scheduled mistress court to order. We'll start with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Grab it, please.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you for giving us the blessing of living in a free country. Please help restore the faith of all the individuals in our community who are suffering during the current economic downturn. Please watch over our troops and law enforcement as they strive to provide safety to the people of our community and our country. And I pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And as always, we'd ask you to turn off your cell phones and pagers except for law enforcement and emergency management personnel. Okay? Item three, discuss take action on court minutes for January 11th, 2016.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number four, discuss take action on court fees for county and district clerk's offices. Madam Clerk.
Good morning.
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 Do we have the numbers in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay. Have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Number five, discuss and take action on use of Horseshoe Arena for district-wide 4-H and youth development training. And looky here, the bride-to-be shows up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, in October, the district 4-H specialist in Midland County are planning on hosting a district-wide 4-H summit, which is a training for all 4-H volunteers, extension agents, and senior 4-H members for the different contests and programs that 4-H has to offer. And we are requesting the educational discount for the horseshoe.
So you're asking, as much like we do for the sheriff's events, that we forego the rental and pay duly management fee out of the marketing account, right?
Yes, sir.
So you could host it at no cost?
Yes, sir.
I will make that motion.
All right. Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. While you're standing there, tell us about the livestock show.
The county livestock show went absolutely wonderful. Our sale was about $380,000. I may be wrong, but that sounds right to me.
Way to go, Court.
Yes.
Good job.
Major stock show so far have gone wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to continue with San Antonio and Houston down the road.
Okay. Please be careful.
Thank you.
And this was just a premium sale, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's fantastic.
All of your parents and kids are just wonderful people. You all are doing a great job.
Thank you.
So it's a joy to be out there with those kids and the goats.
Are you going to introduce your colleague, or are you just going to stand there and tell jokes?
This is Charlene Baloo.
I'm sorry, say again?
Charlene Baloo. She's the district 4-H specialist for District Six.
Good morning, Charlene.
Good morning.
We actually have a copy of the agenda, or proposed agenda, for you guys to have.
Okay. Please.
I felt it was important that if you're going to allow us to have the educational rate, to show you that we are going to host an educational training.
Mm-hmm.
A two-day training for, as she said, our county extension agents in the 23 district area that we represent here in the Permian Basin. And adult volunteers and our senior 4-H members, along with any county support staff that are available to attend. A lot of trainings that county agents go to statewide really relate to management in the county office and programs that they develop and implement and evaluate. But on our district level, it's extremely important that we empower those that we have educating our youth. And that's what this training will do, to allow us to help those individuals have the resources, knowledge, and skills to go back to their counties and then teach the 4-H members to prepare them for future 4-H programs, events, and contests that they'll be participating in. So highly appreciate your support.
How many participants you think you'll have?
We are projecting, we're hoping for at least 100. It's our first event to do. We hope to make it an annual event. And the reason we really targeted Midland County is because to bring in presenters and some of the speakers that we plan to have, we wanted to have a more central area where if some of them needed to also fly in, could utilize the airport. And then, of course, just your great city, the restaurants, hotels, and stuff that you have available, so.
Okay. Do these, similar to other schools like we go to, do these provide official hours for your agents and so forth? Are y'all required to get a certain number of hours? And does this count towards anything like that?
We're actually not required to get hours. Of course, it will go on their curriculum vitae to help them with future promotions. And so that will surely, you know, help the county extension agents in that area.
Thank you.
I see you guys are going to have some good guests. I see Dr. Chris Bowman on here, so that's going to be pretty neat.
Dr. Bowman's actually my boss, and I am blessed to have him. And yes, we want to have him come give a update. Well, we plan to have this right after, you know, the kickoff of the new 4-H year, which is September 1st. And so having this in October, he can sort of bring all of our county agents, volunteers, and 4-H members up to speed on, you know, what he perceives the new 4-H year has to bring everyone. So we're excited to have him on board.
He's a good speaker. Definitely a good speaker.
Good. Well, this is an exciting event for y'all and for us. You visited with Mr. Dooley. Those dates are available, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. We'll go get them.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. They had the presentation. We had a motion. We voted. We're good on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Number six, discuss take action resolution for economic development project for FMC Technologies Incorporated. And we have a guest here from Hector County. And let me give you a little background on this. We've done this a couple of times in working with economic development in Hector County. There are times when the actual location is in the city of Odessa, but it's in Midland County. So we benefit from the ad valorem taxes of this. Tracy, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here. I'm here on behalf of the Odessa Development Corporation. We have approved a project, consolidation project for a couple of locations for S and FMC Technologies that are consolidating into one location. The project is going to be about a $13.5 million project. They'll create 10 new jobs, retain 47 existing, in exchange for a $381,000 grant. And we would, are requesting you guys approve that project. It is in Midland County.
And to be clear, the grant is actually coming from
From the city. Yes.
From Odessa. But the law says we have to pass a resolution concuri. You're not actually asking us for anything
No, we are not asking
Other than a resolution.
For the project.
And for that, we get about $14 million worth of new building going on. I'd like to make that, really.
I'll second that.
Golly, we're going to have a fight over this one. Tracy, give me your name again.
Oh, it's Tracy Jones, I'm the economic development specialist at the Odessa Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks, just for the record.
Okay.
And so I believe Commissioner Donnelly had the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And I've got it right here, and I'll sign it. And Tracy, if you'll give this to Allison. They've got an old form. They have a previous clerk in there, so if you'll just ask her to put her name in there, it'll work. That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're a lot nicer than Scott is, so you come often. Okay? Number seven, discuss and take action on parking spaces for Purple Hearts. This is a wonderful idea that Bill McNeil brought to us. And Bill, if you want to come talk about it, you're welcome to. I encourage the court to approve this. It is one of the few things that we can do openly to support our men and women who have received the Purple Heart. Mr. McNeil?
Good morning.
Morning.
This Purple Heart parking space is kind of taking place around the country, and I kind of wanted Midland County to be the first around this part of the area. It's, a lot of Purple Heart recipients don't consider themselves handicapped, so they won't park in a handicap space. The spaces are not, like you can get a ticket if you park in them, it's just kind of on the honor system for other people not to. But you put a parking space, put a sign up. I think y'all have got the picture of the sign. And you put it up close to the front door, like you do handicap, as close as you can. And it's just a way to honor these boys that have done what they could for the country. And I just think it's a neat deal, and I think I'd like, you know, like to see them here at the courthouse and at the annex and over at the horseshoe. That's three places that there's a lot of traffic and
Do we already have a spot, Bill, picked out for, if we approve this, to place these? Do we already have?
I've been looking. There's a place right out here by one of the, go ahead, sneak up on me.
I got him in blind sight.
Out here by, on the door, there's a light pole that's got a number two on it. It's right close to the door. It'd be a good spot to put two. Over at the annex, in front of the building, there's two handicap places, then there's five parking areas in between them for just parking. You can put two there. At the horseshoe, over at the original horseshoe building, there's one area that's got about eight or nine parking places up against the curb that's close to the door. A couple could go there. And then over at the new part, there's the same kind of area that's close to the door that you can put a couple over there.
Well, Bill, when you mentioned this to me, it's such a good idea, and thank you for your service to this country. Tim Harris has been on a mission, and Tim got some information.
Was it scary? I did it?
Yeah.
We looked, and we found some spots that we can do that. And we can also, if we look at the library and other places, if you want to do this at other places other than those three. Ernie and I have been looking at the plans and rolled by and looked at it. And I think we can do it at quite a few of our places. I haven't talked with the sheriff about the LEV. His parking's kind of scarce, but may be able to get at least one over there massaged in, in the parking in front of the LEV building and maybe in front of the jail. I'm not sure where, but we'll visit with them. I think we ought to do it wherever we can.
Bill, since you mentioned it, Tim and I talked, and we think we ought to approach it from every place the public goes to do business with the county.
I think that'd be great.
And I'm saying that, of course, we still got to vote on it and decide on it. And it's minimal cost. And if there was a donation for these signs, I think that would be appropriate from the county, but the time
I think the cost, the signs are free
Yeah.
From the Wounded Warrior Family Support Organization.
Yeah.
All we have to do, all the county would have to do is pay for the shipping to get them here. They weigh a little less than two pounds apiece.
Yeah.
And I think it'd probably be less than $50 or $60 to get them here.
You think we ought to get about 20 of them, Tim, or is that?
It depends on what you, how extensive you want to do this. If you want to do it at every county building, then we'll make a count and get it back to Bill and let him know how many we need. But if you just want to do it at the three or four that have been mentioned, then, you know, there'd be eight or 10 of them.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve this and leave the actual number up to Tim and Bill to come up with the exact number. But with the intent to put them in all of our, as was mentioned by the judge, at all of our facilities that the public uses.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Bill, way to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the idea.
Tim, are you going to do this through your maintenance account, or do we need to approve some money in addition?
No, I think we can do it.
Okay.
No problem. I just, I wanted guidance on the signs and whether you guys wanted to paint the parking spot in front of it, like they do handicaps, so it's very noticeable, because a lot of times people don't see signs until they're parked.
Correct. Well, I think, yeah, I think the painting, the outline, goes hand in hand with the program.
Okay.
In fact, some places, they've actually painted the whole spot with a different color. But we get that worked out between you and Bill.
We can handle it.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, good. Thanks. Number eight, acknowledge annual statement of delinquent tax for 2014 tax roll from Midland County.
This is something that I'm required to do, and it serves a purpose for the auditor's needs.
Okay. And it says there's about $444,000. Is that right?
Of the delinquent, that's the uncollected levy of the current tax and the delinquent tax.
Okay.
The M and O on it.
Questions, comments?
What are we doing to collect the delinquent tax, or how is that going?
That's handled through our delinquent tax attorneys.
Okay. So do you know how it's going, or what is it that, because if this is 2014, that's been
Yeah. I wish you had run another report to be able to answer that question, but I can do that when I
So I see that, I mean, it's almost two-thirds has been uncollected. That's a pretty high number there. Because 278 was collected, right? And then 444,000 is delinquent?
This is current levy uncollected.
Oh, okay.
This is uncollected out of all the levy.
I see.
You've got 2014 at 278, and the current 2014 total of 444. Put it in perspective, that's out of a collectible of about 27 million, I think it is, 27, 28 million. Okay?
Thank you.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, none. Okay.
Oh, that one, we have, we signed, is
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're
The same one, now we got to call it up. Number nine, acknowledge the summary of collections for the tax office.
This is the original.
That's the original. Go ahead, Karen.
As you can see from the numbers, we have collected quite a bit more money this year as compared to last year.
Oh, Judge, that's the original. Thank you.
And our ad valorem is where the big difference is. So, so that's, yeah, we've done good.
Well, you don't have to send me that anymore, because this is what I was looking for, so you're good. Thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
Anything you want to say, Karen, or?
No, that's all I had to say about it.
Okay. Those require
Thank you for going good with the collections with the appraisal district. Still think that was a good move, and just leave your acknowledgement on it.
By the response from the public, they seem to be very happy about it. At least while we're here. Okay. Is there Is that true, we've had no boat sales tax?
Well, you know, that's kind of cyclical, you know. It, I mean, this was from December, so people aren't registering their boats and buying boats in that period of time.
Man, nobody got any Christmas this year.
Right? That'll
I already have one. Why should I buy?
Close to the end of spring and summer.
Okay. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion to acknowledge.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 10, discuss take action on library donations. Thank you, Karen. Mr. T.
Judge, commissioners,
Come to here today.
You should have backup in front of you, just material, no monetary.
Okay.
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Well, I really like the Cliff Notes that we got.
You like some of those?
Yeah.
Cliff Notes are still popular, Commissioner.
Number 11, discuss take action on out-of-state travel for Edward McPherson to attend the Association of Fundraising Professional Conference, Boston, Mass., March 20 through 22nd, 2016.
This is budgeted travel for Edward. He does quite a bit of grant writing. He's a member of AFP, not only for the library, but he's helped the judges with the Veterans Court the last couple of years, trying to get some grant money from the state. So this is just good continuing education to keep him up to date on. Most effective grant writing, especially in the coming economy. I think it's going to be important.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 12, discuss take action on out-of-state travel for Jessica Waller and John Trichetti to attend Public Library Association Conference in Denver, Colorado, on April 6th through 9th, 2016. That's a budgeted item.
Correct. This is budgeted as well. The Public Library Association is a division of the American Library Association. Their conference is only every other year, and so it's going to give me an opportunity to get some of the 20 hours of continuing education that I need annually for accreditation through the state. But they also have a really good bookmobile presence at Public Library Association, and Jessica being our point person on that, it's going to give her an opportunity to network and get some ideas. And so those are both budgeted.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Before you leave, tell us where we are on the robotics lab.
So we're, we've partnered, as you know, with the Petroleum Museum. They were the recipients of some of that CAF money that Speaker Craddock secured, so it didn't exit. And we've partnered with them to do kind of a robotics and engineering lab at the downtown library. We have added a 3D printer component that y'all accepted in court a few courts ago that we received from a grant through the state. We've, we're going to do some training for her staff and the Petroleum Museum staff and volunteers and some of our staff at the end of this month. Hope to roll out the first of the actual programming in March. They are tied up in construction. However, out at the Petroleum Museum, as you know, they're going through a pretty big renovation. Their administrative staff is still officeing at the downtown library. The last I heard, they were going to try to open this spring, they're thinking April for the opening. So doing the best we can to accommodate trying to keep that ball rolling, but understand where they are with the construction out there.
They gave us a preview last week when they were hosting the legislative hearing. And wow, it's nothing like the old museum. It is something else.
So they, while they own the actual materials, with the exception of the 3D printer, most of the program is going to happen at the downtown library. They'll do some things out at their spot, but they have a pretty full slate of programming already, so.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Number 13, discuss take action on out-of-state travel for Heather Henderson and Joanne Gonzalez to attend National Association Drug Court Professionals Veteran Court Annual Training Conference, Anaheim, California, June 1 through 6, 2016. Joanne's not here, but this is an item that would support the drug court and the veterans court. Those are specialty courts that have specialty processes. So these two ladies are the sports staff for the respective courts, and I would encourage the court to give this favorable consideration.
I'm making the motion, and we approve this.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And Ms. Kleeman, if you'd tell them, since they're up working, I appreciate it. All right. Number 14, discuss take action on 179D tax credit for Vandergriff Group Architects. We had this on here before, and it was such a distinctive change in the law that we tabled it, and I believe each of you had a chance to visit with Mr. Vandergriff, who's in attendance. And it's a tax credit that is only available to the architects of facilities for government entities. It's kind of a twist. And there is a form I have in my possession, and the two items that qualify are the Midland County Jail, and the other is the Midland County Pavilion at the horseshoe. So anybody want to ask a question, Mr. Vandergriff? Or Gary, if you want to say anything, you're welcome to. But it's, it's the same tax credit we used to see that the county never used because we're nonprofit.
Russell, what form does this motion need to take?
I think it would just be a motion to approve authorizing the 179D tax credit for Vandergriff.
I'll do exactly that, then.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and multiple seconds, and that calls for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. I don't hear any, so Gary, here you go. As odd as it sounds, it's done. Thank you. All right. 15, discuss take action on Midland County Sheriff Office fees. Sheriff?
As required with statute, I have to report to you, any elected official that receives fees
Okay.
Goes to the court and to where they went and the amount. You have that in front of you. You have any questions?
Do you have to, or do you get to?
No, I have to.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I get to abide by the state law.
You have the opportunity to obey the law.
How can you go?
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 16, acknowledge the Midland County Sheriff's Office 2015 racial profiling report. Sheriff?
Director, sue you.
Thank you.
We did not have any complaints regarding racial profiling. I have given a copy to the county clerk. Will ask that it be inserted in a minute so that anyone can come view it if they choose
Sheriff, it doesn't look like there's any material change from the one last year.
Not really. Still, people violate the law. We have, the people that we set up as the traffic enforcement has done an outstanding job. as the traffic enforcement has done an outstanding job. They're bringing in a lot of tickets and citations and warnings. Over 4,000 citations and over 2,000 warnings have been issued. 6,814 people have been contacted. And there's a breakdown as to the number of people, whether they were searched or not, and all that kind of stuff. And that is there for your purview. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay.
Sheriff, I see that these are broken down by zip code. Do y'all break them down by precinct?
We got those broken down from zip code through the state.
Okay.
So we didn't, I have no way of breaking it down by precinct, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 17, discuss take action on donation from Shorty's Rental and Feed, in the amount of $500 for the Midland County Sheriff's Office DARE program. Sheriff?
We have a company going around that has been selling advertising space for a calendar for the DARE program to raise money for the DARE program. Shorty's Rental, Shorty decided to make the donation directly to the DARE program itself in the amount of $500, and would appreciate your acknowledgement.
Okay. Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. 18, discuss take action on purchase of tire balancer. Kristy?
Yes, sir. The current tire machine is no longer working properly, and right now we are having to outsource on balancing tires. And we have a quote from Napa Auto Parts for a Hunter machine in the amount of $14,326.96.
Okay.
And we called around to Bill Williams, and we talked to the city in Ector County, and this is the machine that, that they recommend. And we also had a demo, and John from Vector agreed that it's going to be a good machine. It's going to last us for a long time.
How are you going to pay for it?
Dwayne from Risk Management is going to pay for it out of claims, because the previous tire machine, I think, was shot.
The previous tire machine was found to have electrical problems in it because of the power spikes that we've been having out there, and it burned out some boards that we just can't get anymore.
Okay, so it's out of risk management?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 9.
Make a motion, please.
Jimmy?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a tire balancer and funds to come out of Risk Management.
All right. You good, Bailey? All right. 19, discuss take action on purchase pressure washer. Kristy?
Yes, this is not a budgeted item, but I believe that Roden Bridge has submitted a line item transfer, and they are wanting this pressure washer to replace a current pressure washer that is broken and cannot get maintenance on it. We have a quote from Washing Equipment of Texas in the amount of $14,067.
Okay. What's the line item transfer coming out of?
Do you know that phone?
I don't.
Well.
It's $300. It's $300 decreasing road maintenance and materials and putting it into Capital Outlay, greater than $5,000.
I believe they already have some money in Capital Outlay over $5,000.
Okay.
So they were just needing the 300?
Okay, gotcha.
I'll make that motion to purchase this pressure washer with the remaining amount coming out of the line item said by the auditor.
Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 20, discuss take action on service agreement with train for courthouse, Culver, Horseshoe, and downtown library.
This is a budgeted item, and this is a one-year service agreement. We use the TCN contract. The terms are quarterly payments, and the total for the courthouse is $25,880. Culver is $17,148. Horseshoe is $3,552, and the library is $18,296.
Okay.
And this is service on the HVAC equipment.
Okay. And it's all budgeted, so I'll make the motion that we, that we approve the service agreement with train for the courthouse, Culver, Horseshoe, and downtown library. Okay. Excuse me, I was reading. All right, a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. This is what I was reading. 21, discuss take action on donating unit 45207, a 2009 Husqvarna mule to Ector County.
Correct. Kenneth Lind, the purchasing agent in Ector County, has asked for this mule. We, it does not function. The transmission is completely blown in it, but he believes that they have a transmission that they can repair it with. We were just going to either auction it, or it's, I don't even know that we will get anything from auction.
Okay.
So we may have to just destroy it. But Ector County has asked for this.
They have possibly a need for it. It's already surplus to us.
Correct.
Okay. You just don't see that very often.
I know.
If we were going to take it surplus, I would.
I'm sorry, before you make the motion, if I can just, just add one other thing. We actually cannot donate to another county. We, we can sell to another county without going up for bids. However, in this case, with something that we think probably would not bring anything at auction and is not worth anything to us anymore, a sale, the sales price can simply be, or our compensation can be, that they incur all costs of removing it from Midland to Ector County.
All right.
So I'd include that, ask to include that as part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Can I get some potholes in the city of Odessa?
Absolutely.
City of Odessa or Ector County. I would make the motion that, that we, that we sell the, the mule to Ector County with the price being the cost of removal directly to the county. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 22, discuss take action on funding source for repairs of house located at Horseshoe. Tim's got this in the packet. We had been around and around about what to do with the, as we knew at the DPS house. And Tim?
Zimmerman House, as it's called. When the DPS officer moved out, we discussed, had several options, what to do with the house. And one of them was repair it and make it fresh again so somebody, so we could have another DPS officer live in it. I took Midland Construction over there and had them walk through it with me, and, and we found that the flooring throughout the entire house needed to be replaced. There's some damage to the floors and places. There's some damage to the walls just from living. They weren't destructive, you know, overtly destructive, just, just living in it. And the kitchen area needed some repairs, and so this is what he came up with. There's, there's an alternate on there to do the exterior also. That's in need of some repair. And it's, y'all's call what you want to do with it. I mean, we, and one of the other options is to remove the house and use the property, which, you know, could be seen as a waste.
Yeah. What's the cost that we're looking at?
Total cost would be 33, about 34,000, if you do both.
What do you mean if you do both?
Well, there's a, we can do the interior for 21-3.
Correct.
And if you add the exterior, it's another 12-7.
So that's the alternate that you have on here?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I would fix it up and, and put it back in, in real good shape. And then we could ask another DPS officer or someone if they wanted to live in it, whatever the court wanted to do with it. But it's, that's quite a bit of money to, to repair it, so I brought it to the court to decide what they wanted to do.
You mentioned something about removal. How much would that cost?
I don't actually know what it would cost. It'd probably be fuel and some time with my guys to push it over and get in dump trucks. It's just, you know, whatever the court desires.
Sure, eight, lose, lose living quarters in Midland. Never know.
On the upside, it was very good to have a DPS presence there. Just the vehicle sitting there sometimes helps. And he did make circles through the parking lot at night and on, when he was there. So, you know, if he wasn't living there for free, he did, he did do us a service.
Correct.
As you know, we modified the arrangements on these properties. Commissioner Smith has drawn up, and Russell approved, a new lease form, and that would be what we would use if we choose to put it back into DPS use. DPS has informed me, they could use four or five more houses if they can get them. And if you knocked it over, which is certainly a possibility, what we'll end up with is some more outdoor storage space.
Correct.
So, but whatever the court would like.
What, what, what do you see as the future needs of itself as far as that's going to be?
Well, we're building the, the warehouse out there now, which will unload the barn. We've got stacks and stacks of tables and chairs in the barn, and we're going to put them all in the warehouse where they're closer to where they need to be. That will open that up to where we can have more storage for maintenance items, that type of stuff. We've got, right now, four C containers that we own, and we're releasing two. That will empty, once we get all this shuffling done, I see that we'll probably be empty on half of those. But it'll, you know, the barn will be full. You know, I don't know what's happening in, in the near future with that, I mean, you know, with the property. But, you know, it's always something that we can do in the future if we choose to.
I remind the court that early on in this conversation, when we knew the gentleman was going to move, or actually buy a home, one of the ideas, if we knocked it down, then it would become eligible to expand the RV slots also. But that would separate those RVs. So I think that's all we talked about.
It would become real estate that would be gobbled up by something, you know, because there's not much out there that's not got something on it, other than where we can't.
If you'd like to, absolutely. Okay, gentlemen, by agreement, we've had a request to table. Is that, all right?
Yes. Yes.
All right, we'll table it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to call 23, 4, and 5, because they're all interconnected. 23, discuss take action on purchase magnetometer. 24, discuss take action clearing old magnetometer surplus. And 25, discuss take action on possible donation of old magnetometer. Andy and I have been talking, as we've had other conversations in the court, in trying to keep our equipment current, and we had a backup spare magnetometer breakdown.
Yes, sir.
It's been repaired, but the repair is substantial compared to what the cost of a new one is.
Yes, sir.
And then Andy brought it to my attention that the one that was, I guess we ought to call it repaired, but it's really questionable.
Yes, sir.
Is a 2000 vintage.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's going, what, 16 years old now?
Yeah. So go ahead, Andy, tell us.
What we're asking for is to get the same type that we're using here at the courthouse, which is the Garrett PD 6500I. It's a lot more efficient metal detector. It's got 33 zone detection, which is programmable to what we need. We're not so much concerned about firearms coming through, looking for those. It's, it's other weapons, such as edge and pointed type weapons, in which this would make it so much more efficient for us to find this type of weapon coming through the building. Knowing that the annex, we have those courts that come through every once in a while. If we had the same type metal detector that we're using here, it would, it would benefit the officers using the same type of equipment.
And so your plan would be if we do this, take the one at the annex and make it one of the backups?
Yes, sir.
And that will bring us forward in time a number of years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think Andy's on point with this. It's not a budgeted item, but it's not an expensive item either.
No, we're looking at 3,800 and some change.
Okay. It wouldn't have to come out of contingency if we agree to do it, so.
And this is to put at the annex? Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Then you would have the annex and the courthouse running at the same type of equipment with the modern capabilities.
Make that motion that we purchase a magnetometer from Optics Planet at $3,852.90.
And that the money come out of?
Where did?
It needs to come out of contingency.
And the money coming out of contingency.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Andy, thank you.
Thank you, Court.
Then that would require us to do something with the other one, otherwise it's just going to sit up there in parts. So I would ask that we declare the old one that was just repaired as surplus. That's the 2000 vintage. And let me, if I may, go to 25. Instead of going to surplus with it, because we don't get anything for these at surplus, I would ask that we consider a donation to the General Franks Foundation, who is building a exhibit, which we will see coming through the library in, in time. And they have possible use for this. If they didn't use it, we'd get it back. So, anyway, so we're on 24.
Is there a value?
The value, best we can tell, is, is about 100 bucks. Andy, is that right? This old one, 2000, best we can tell, the value is surplus about 100 bucks?
Yes, sir. And it would probably take more than that to have it disposed of.
Okay. Russ?
Judge, we can donate to a civic or charitable organization located in Midland County, but I think the Franks Foundation is not.
Well, that's the next question.
Yeah, that would be the problem, is if they're not a, if they're not located in Midland County, I don't think we can donate it to them.
Okay, there is, in the conversation, thanks for pointing that out. The Franks Foundation, the original one, is in Oklahoma. We own custodian care of a lot of the exhibits. And there is conversation, when I brought this up, there's conversation that they would create a Texas foundation for a secondary purpose, but also to bring that exhibit here. So if we chose to do this, I would ask that we do it only once we find out this information.
Can I go ahead and declare it?
Yeah, you can declare it surplus.
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion, all in favor say, and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes, and then.
Can we table 25?
Yeah, and I just want you to be aware of it, and I'll find out, and Russell can take a look at the qualifications on it, and see if it qualifies, and if it does, it's a great place for it. If it isn't, then we don't do it that way. Okay. All right. So number 25 is tabled.
Supposed to sit down. We're not supposed to have any accidents.
Only one this time.
In anticipation, we will call 26, discuss take action on complete accidents. Wayne?
Only one this time to report. Be back on January 28. There's an at-fault accident to one of the sheriff's department units, 15530. We're actually going to end up having to replace the other person's vehicle, too, the motorcycle. I have contacted our insurance, and we'll go from there as far as how much it's going to cost.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Is there an acknowledgement?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. 27, acknowledge the quarterly investment report. Excuse me.
Yes, sir. You guys should have in front of you the quarterly report for investments that ended in December. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Seeing rates go up?
No, sir. If they do, it's very, very small. We haven't liquidated anything, though, which is very good.
Discussions or motions or acknowledgements?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 28, acknowledge quarterly sick leave pool report.
Yes, sir. You should have the report. Our beginning balance for the quarter ending in December was a little over 4,840 hours. We had quite a few donations, but we have had a withdrawal again this quarter. So our ending balance is 4,344. Our employees have been really, really good about donating when they know there's a need, and so we're in good shape there.
Motion to acknowledge the quarterly sick leave report.
All right. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 29, take action acknowledging personnel memorandum.
Yes, sir. There's nothing too much out of the ordinary this time. There is one payment for overtime in pretrial, towards the bottom of the page. That's paid according to policy for a pretrial.
Okay.
And that is all.
Any questions or motions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second, I just noticed Ms. Virginia Davis is retiring. I had no idea. Second, that's why I said all, man.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you. 30, discuss take action on budget line item transfers, Veronica.
I have nothing to bring to your attention this morning.
Good report.
What?
No action, okay.
Wow.
31, discuss take action bills and wire transfers, Veronica.
I wish I could say the same thing about Davis. I'm sorry, so she has nothing to report, so there's none?
There's no action.
But we have to approve the line item-
No, 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 nothing extra or ordinary. You do have all your line item transfers that you have to-
Excuse me, that's why I'm got this.
Motion to approve the-
We're back on 31.
Thank you, Allison.
Back on 30, Judge.
I mean, 30, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget line item transfers.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and before we vote, Allison, if you'll note that Commissioner Prude had to be in court, okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, motion passes. Now we're at 31.
Thank you.
Yeah, I took yet your word.
Wire transfers. We do have a wire transfer this morning, county clerk's office, deposit in general bull cash account in error, a dollar and eighty-three cents, that needs to be given back to the county clerk's office. As far as bills are concerned, I do have some exceptions to your purchasing policy and to the law, which means we have to get a purchase order before we can make purchases. I do have one for overdrive, and this is out of the library. There, there is a fee of three thousand dollars that needs to be paid. There's also a fee, a participation fee, for the future content purchases of six thousand dollars. The purchase order was made for the three thousand dollars, but not the six thousand dollars. Explanation provided by Ms. Triscetti indicates that it was overlooked, basically, and they only did the purchase order for the fees. I do have an invoice here from Train, from Facilities. The invoice is in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Of that, forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents needed to be expensed. The explanation provided indicates, we originally talked to Train about wanting six of the controls that they were ordering. When Ernie was told the price, he decided to only order three, but Train ended up sending six, and they wanted to go ahead and keep the three. So because of that, three of them are being purchased without a purchase order. I have the same, so there's two invoices on that train for that, one for one ninety-six twenty-eight, and one for ninety-one dollars and sixty-four cents for those additional units. I do have an invoice here for D and E Electric, and I may need Christie and maybe even Tim to help me out with this.
Okay.
There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven invoices with D and E Electric. It has to do with a pavilion. This is the first that I hear of these invoices. These invoices are dated old year, which means we have to do an accrual for our financial statements to, to code them back, but I guess my concern was the fact that they are so old, and the fact that they had been brought to our attention for payments, so.
These are the ones that you found, right?
Yes, sir. These were sent to us by D and E Electric back in the fall, I can't remember exactly when. We did have to try to figure out what was actually going on with them. We know that the work that they are stating on the invoices has been performed, but we did not know when the authorization had taken place. Now, they do have several of these that say authorization had been made by Jason Bates and by Monty and, and things of that nature, and we have found out that there were things that we weren't aware of. Change orders, I had to go through the change orders on the contract. No change orders were made. We believe that this stuff had an intention of creating a change order, but it, it never was able to get done.
And this was done about the period before your predecessor-
Correct, right.
Left.
Because I believe whenever he had every intention of doing it, and it just didn't happen.
Okay.
And I believe, we did do, like I said, we researched through the contract to see if any changers or had, change orders had been made, and they had not, and I believe that there was a miscommunication in my office. We thought that we had told Facilities to go ahead and pay these, and I guess that did not take place.
Okay.
And these change orders happened during that transition? So they never, I should say, they were supposed to happen during that transition, but they didn't happen, of course, because of what happened with Monty?
Correct. These were approved by Monty, and Monty, the way he set up the contract is he would do small change orders, and then he would group them all together and do one change order at a time.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that he had the intentions of putting this with a change order, but he wasn't able to remember to do it due to his office.
Mm-hmm.
So because of that, we have thirty-two thousand six eighty-eight, eighty-one that needs to be expensed, and we have no purchase order for, and therefore that's why I'm bringing it to your attention this morning.
Okay.
I do have one for Cactus Signs, and this is out of Facilities. Says we called Horseshoe's, I was called by the Horseshoe saying that the sign wasn't working correctly, so instead of waiting for Cactus to go look at the, look at it and give us a quote, I did an estimate only for three hundred dollars. This invoice is for three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents, so it way exceeds the amount of the PO, so that is why I'm bringing it to your attention. I do have one for April Tex, and this is out of the IT's budget that they're paying for. This is the overlap while transitioning to the new alarm monitoring company. The transition is taking longer than expected, but is now complete, so this is a service charge for the, I believe it's a JP two and four building out there. I do have one from, for Coligan Water out of the SO detention, in the amount of five hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents. Explanation provided from Sergeant Nichols indicates that a maintenance person did the, did not write a PO, as they were under the impression that be, being with the water softener system, we could use a BPO for payment. So this is an extra service that was done to service it, and OPO was written. I do have one for Xerox, for SO Admin, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that they charged us for coming out to remove the hard drive legally, and I guess we didn't know that we were gonna incur an additional charge. We also had to do the same thing with the, what was she was saying? Courthouse security, thank you, office, and so when they did courthouse security, since there was two of them, they ended up charging us for both of them, which initially we didn't think there was gonna be a charge for. I do have one for Office Wise, for the 142nd District Court, having to do with toner. The amount of the PO was only for two hundred and thirty, thirty dollars, and it was exceeded it by eighty-one dollars. So three hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-eight cents is the invoice on that. We do have one for HR, having to do with the food for the elected officials and department heads.
Meeting retreat.
Retreat, thank you. Retreat, it says did not get a PO due to the fact that we didn't have a final attendance number, so we didn't know the price, is what they're indicating on that, for the duly invoice in the amount, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Another one from HR, having to do with that same retreat. I need additional easel pads for the retreat. Office Supplies Company can, we used to write POs, did not have them on hand, and needed them the same day. So therefore, no PO was obtained, and Bailey's asking to be reimbursed directly, eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. We have one here for Shuner Security.
Shoner, Schoonover.
Sorry, yes, Schoonover.
Okay.
One thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. A PO was written for six hundred and forty, and we're having to do a lot, expense one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So. I do have one additional bill that I'm asking for your consideration, it's a hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Fender Truck Accessories, this has to do with, after we're done with all the check run in our office, we went through the system to make sure there was nothing missed, and there was one invoice that hadn't, that had gotten approved, but just hadn't gotten approved by us. So I'm requesting that the court allow me to go ahead and, and pay this bill.
Okay.
That is all I have.
Motion to approve all of the additional ones. Fenders, is that what we-
Fender trucking, yes, sir.
Okay, second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thirty-two, thank you, Veronica. Thirty-two, take action on submitted application permit to use county right-of-way for utility line installation, driveway construction, mailbox construction. Precinct one. Precinct two. Eight. Precinct three.
None.
Precinct four has, in the courtroom, so he can do his next week.
I'll make a motion that we approve all.
All right. Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes, and that completes the agenda. Russell, we have two executive session items from the court. Do you have litigation?
I do not have anything.
All right, if you'll give us-
Is that, what's the litigation?
Could be. Okay, we have three things from the court, so we will recess for ten minutes and then come back in executive session, pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, to consult county attorney regarding pending prospective litigation, other matters. Thirty-four, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, to discuss personnel matters. And thirty-five, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value real property. Based on that, I've got ten o'clock by my watch, so let's take a ten-minute recess. Okay, we are back from executive session at eleven fourteen by my watch, and we're still on the February eighth meeting, 2016. Is there any action from executive session?
Yes, there is, Judge. I'd like to put pool line item number thirty again, discussing take action on budget line item transfers.
Okay, we'll call thirty, discuss take action budget line item transfers again. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, Veronica, I'd like for us to open up a line item in Constable Precinct Three, line item number 5555, equipment rental.
Okay.
And transfer six hundred dollars from contingency into that budget.
Okay, is that a motion, sir?
Yes, I'd like to make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
You bet. We had one other item that, Jimmy, you needed to go back and, and go to thirty-two, take action on submitted application permit to use county right-of-way for utility line installation, driveway construction, mailbox construction, and precinct four is back from their court meeting, and so if you have any.
I do not have any.
Okay, precinct one.
One that was hidden over here I need to approve.
Okay, Commissioner, precinct one had a hidden one. There's one more.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Is there any other action today? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We're adjourned, eleven fifteen.